Good evening, everyone. I'm going to begin the meeting with a short prayer and a salute to our flag. Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all our residents. May the heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice and service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our service men and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Statement of publication?
Take notice that this regular agenda meeting of the mayor and borough council being held on this 23rd day of September 2025 has been posted and advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Publica 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Balka?
Here.
Kalisi?
Yeah.
Novak?
Yeah.
Roberts?
Here.
Sinarski?
Yeah.
Zabrowski?
Approval of prior minutes, council president.
I move the following minutes of the mayor and council be approved on roll call vote, subject to correction if necessary. We have the September 8th regular and agenda and our September 9th receipt of bids. Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Roberts?
Yes.
Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay, before we begin, just a couple of things. We're at that time of year. It's the heat of the campaign season, so there's a fair amount of misinformation going on. But we're starting work on the firehouse next door, so I just want to clarify for everyone what's paying for it. So it's the Municipal Open Space Recreation and Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. That is the full legal name. The authority to establish the fund. A municipal open space recreation farmland and historic preservation trust fund is hereby created pursuant to the provisions and conditions of NJSA 40:12-15.7, et cetera. Its ordinance number 671-00S1. The funding, the said trust fund shall be funded through the imposition of an additional annual tax levy of up to two cents per hundred dollars of the borough's total assessed real property value. The fund being used for the firehouse restoration and preservation is named the Municipal Open Space Recreation Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. This project is fully permissible use of these dollars and was actually the funding source suggested by the very individuals who first requested the ballot measure to preserve the old firehouse. Let me also be clear, our construction department has been stuck in temporary trailers for nearly 20 years. This investment ensures they finally return to a safe brick and mortar building while the historic character of the old firehouse will be preserved. The building will not be torn down. It will be restored and put to use as new office space for the men and women who handle construction and code enforcement for the borough. As for the claim about grants, the facts don't support it. Many of the so-called available historic preservation grants circulating online are restricted to just five blighted cities. They are Camden, Atlantic City, Trenton, Patterson, and Newark. Saraville is not eligible nor ever has been eligible. Beyond that, historic preservation grants are highly competitive, not guaranteed, and limited in scope. After reviewing with our grant writer, there are simply not many grants that Saraville qualifies for, and that would cover this work. The truth is, this project represents a responsible use of an established trust fund, keeps faith with the original intent of preserving the old firehouse, and finally moves our employees out of trailers and back into a permanent building that benefits the entire community. Spreading half-truths and misinformation only confuses residents from the real solutions that move Saraville forward. The other thing I wanted to bring up at the beginning of the meeting, the acreage, the 40 acres adjacent to Kennedy Park, they're originally, including the park, that was originally part of the Crossman Sand Company, and it went from Washington Road to Main Street. So there's 40 acres on one side of the trestle and about 140 acres on the other. During my predecessor's term, the planning board approved, I think, John, three warehouses there on the Crossman Sand Track, which have yet to be built. We have made several contacts with the property owner. He owns both the Main Street side and the Washington Road side, the Kennedy Park side, and we've asked him if he would be interested in selling it to the borough, and we never even discussed price, if he would be willing to sell it to the borough so we could put it in open space. He purchased the property back in 1990. I think he bought the whole thing, both sides, for a million dollars, and he said he's held it for years, and now property is very valuable, and he'd like to develop it. He does not want to sell it to the borough because he can make more money developing it. That being said, in 1990, the borough ran a surplus every year of over a million dollars. The borough could have purchased this in 1990, but they didn't, and now it's worth a great deal more. Regardless of what anybody says, an assessment, I am not in the business of condemning property and taking property from property owners, because if you follow that path out, then what happened in Long Branch, when they condemned people's homes so that they could redevelop it, I'm not going to allow here in Saraville. And that's where that leads, because if you do it, once you start, there's no stopping you, and that is not something, as far as I know, anyone here on the governing body wants to engage. It's called condemnation, so you might think it just is going to happen to big pieces of property, but Long Branch, there were people that lived in their homes for 50 years, and all of a sudden their property was condemned by the town, and they took an awful lot of homes, and they created what you see now down in Long Branch. That is not what we're going to do here. There's not what anybody sitting up here has any intention of getting involved with. That being said, let's move to the first order of business.
Public hearing on the following ordinances. Ordinance number 24-25, and ordinance supplementing and amending section 13-4.3 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Saraville, receptacle for municipal solid waste.
Councilwoman Novak?
You have to open a mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to open this to comments from the public. Are there any questions or comments? There being none, I'll entertain a motion, Councilwoman Novak.
Move the public portion, we close. The ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Novak?
Yes.
Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Next item, appointments. Council president?
First appointment I have is for cultural arts, Brian McHugh.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Roberts?
Yes.
Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
I have a second. It is Mitchell Cooper for an unexpired term in zoning. Do we, John, before I make that appointment, do you know how long that unexpired term is for?
They're one-year terms, because it's an alternate position, so it would be expired. It would be probably to the end of the year, and then he'd be reappointed.
Whoever was sitting here would appoint. Okay, so I make a motion to appoint Mitchell Cooper to zoning for the remainder of the year.
On the alternate position?
On the alternate position.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Roberts?
Yes.
Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to report that I received the supplemental debt statement from CFO Danielle Mayer-Rana as of September 23rd, 2025. I need a motion to receive and file, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I need a roll call on that, mayor.
Need a roll call? Roll call.
Councilperson's Novak?
Yes.
Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to report that I received the supplemental debt statement from CFO Danielle Mayer-Rana as of September 23rd, 2025. I need a motion to receive and file, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I need a roll call on that, mayor.
Need a roll call? Roll call.
Councilperson's Novak?
Yes.
Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Bond ordinance 26-25, bond ordinance providing for various park improvements by and in the Borough of Saraville in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,240,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,178,000 bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Councilwoman Balka?
Will the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and a public hearing be held on 10/14/2025?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Bond ordinance 27-25, bond ordinance providing for various roadway improvements by and
in the Borough of Saraville in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $6,360,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $6,42,000 bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Councilman Balka?
Will the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and a public hearing be held on 10/14/2025?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Bond ordinance 28-25, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 general capital improvements by and in the Borough of Saraville in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,420,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,349,000 bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Councilman Balka?
Will the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and a public hearing be held on 10/14/2025?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Bond ordinance 29-25, bond ordinance providing for acquisition of various vehicles and equipment by and in the Borough of Saraville in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $3,680,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3,496,000 bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Councilman Balka?
Will the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and a public hearing be held on 10/14/2025?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Bond ordinance 30-25, bond ordinance providing for various water utility improvements by and in the Borough of Saraville in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $2,742,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,742,000 in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Councilman Balka?
Will the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and a public hearing be held on 10/14/2025?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Bond ordinance 31-25, bond ordinance providing for various water utility improvements by and in the Borough of Saraville in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,900,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,900,000 in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Councilman Balka?
Will the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and a public hearing be held on 10/14/2025?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Ordinance 32-25, and ordinance supplementing and amending, ordinance 02-24, fixing the salaries of certain borough officials, officers, and employees for the years 2023 through 2027.
Councilman Balka?
Will the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and a public hearing be held on 10/14/2025?
Roll call.
Councilperson's Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay, this time I'm going to open the public portion for questions or comments on the resolutions. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor Jim Robinson Parlin. Thank you for the opportunity to ask questions or make comments. First of all, happy Rosh Hashanah to everyone celebrating tonight. Mayor, I want to touch on the two things that you talked about that are mentioned in resolutions here. I think it's 229. What was online, there were two, resolution number 228, but I think the correct number is 229. That has to do with open space, and council president, you issued a campaign release saying you and your running mate wanted to preserve 300 acres of open space in the town, and that is a laudable goal. Last meeting, you voted no on preserving 40 acres, which would have been a great start, very good start, maybe 14%, 15% towards that way. You know, for years, we've had an open space inventory that included as priorities number one, two, and three. It's a 33-page report, and this is on page 32 and page 33 of the report. It included priorities number one, two, and three, that were the Mako property where the 1.7 square foot, 1.7 million square foot warehouses being built, and that was approved by the planning board because of a suit we lost during your administration, mayor, a very costly suit. The NL property by Costa Verde, where a couple hundred three-bedroom condos are being built, is another one of the items, and the third item on that is the 40 acres behind Kennedy Park that Mako owned, where you voted a few meetings ago to put 250 apartments in the Affordable Housing Plan. And in the release, council president and her running mate, my friend, Tony Esposito, said, "Now is the time to build." I'm sorry, Freudian slip. He said, "Now is the time to build on this momentum." I'd say the momentum is going in the wrong direction. We need to reverse the momentum of the last 22 years in this town, and we can start by preserving the 40 acres behind Kennedy Park. And despite that, we already have this open space inventory to fulfill your campaign promise, you want to spend $15,000 on an environmental resource inventory of the borough's natural resources such as wetlands, forests, waterways, wildlife habits, and environmentally sensitive areas. It says nothing in this resolution about open space. And I have to wonder, you, and you were at Kennedy Park, you were all at Kennedy Park, I think, Sunday. From there, you could see a wildlife habitat. It's loaded with wildlife that are sadly being pushed out because of the warehouses being, the warehouse being built and the apartments being built there, and we can thank you for those apartments too, mayor. Was the open space committee consulted on this? I'd like to know that, and how does this $15,000 report differ from the report that they've had since 2016? And you know, I just want to clarify something. When we talk about eminent domain, people aren't suggesting that we use eminent domain to build homes like they did in Long Branch. People are suggesting that they use eminent domain to stop the building of homes, to stop the building of apartments, 250 apartments, on the last, one of the last open spaces we have in town. I'm glad you want to start preserving open space. I just wish you felt that way before you got so close to the election. With respect to the historical, what you call the historical preservation, that ordinance talks about using money for historical preservation. When the historical society mentioned that, they talked about it because they thought that building truly would be historically preserved, not more offices for the construction department. There's a difference. And historic preservation talks about protecting historic resources to ensure they continue to play a vital role in their communities and serve as a link to the past. It involves maintaining the integrity of historic properties through planned efforts to sustain the existing form and materials of historic properties while preserving their historical, cultural, and architectural values. There is nothing historical about making that an office for the construction department. This is kind of like where, you know, we took half a million dollars out of the shade tree budget to buy a tractor for the sanitation department. This isn't what's supposed to be done, and if you valued open space, you wouldn't be stealing money from the open space fund. Thank you very much.
That being said, and I thank, I thank the long-term member and chairman of the planning board who did bring us over 4,000 residences during his tenure on the planning board. Always nice, there's, there's, there's nothing like a reformed sinner. Is there anyone else?
Mayor, that's a lie. Your information is wrong, and some of the things that you were talking about occurred when I was in high school, and others I voted no on. So that is a lie, mayor. That is another O'Brien lie.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on these resolutions? No? Okay. That being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, before I make a motion, I want to discuss the JC P and L bill.
Yes.
That's on the bill list, and...
Well, I wanted to close the resolutions.
All right. So let me, I make a motion to close the public.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson's Roberts?
Yes.
Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Council president?
Before I make any motion to accept the resolutions, I want to discuss on the bill list the JC P and L issue that we've been having for quite some time, and I do understand that they have made certain strides to resolve the issue. For example, they've changed our contact. They have been replacing lights. They have been successful at the light exchange. However, there are some extraordinarily problematic areas, one of which is Wilshire Boulevard in Sheffield Muse, I understand, is, has got most of its lights out.
Yes.
Most of the time.
Right.
The days are getting shorter. We're going to do the time change, which is going to give us like pitch black at 4:00 PM.
Right.
We have to have a solution for those long-term...
Well, I was going to propose during my, my portion that because their performance has not met our requirements, that beginning October 1st, we would stop sending them a check, and that we would hold it in abeyance until, until their perform, we would link it directly to their performance and response to the needs of the borough.
I think I would like to...
Would you be in favor of that?
In favor of that, I would make a motion.
Would you make that motion?
I would, and I would also...
Is there a second to that motion?
We already had a motion and a second when we were still having meetings in the senior center to...
Wait a minute, there's a motion made. Is there a second?
We already have a motion, though.
There's a motion to stop, to not send, to not pay JC P and L beginning October 1st. Is there a second?
Not to pay the entire bill?
Not to pay the bill.
The entire bill?
Yes. Is there, is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Comments?
I just have one comment. I have to ask the attorney. Is that legal? I mean, we got his opinion for deducting for the lights that weren't working. Is it legal to just not pay the entire bill?
I mean, we are obligated to pay our bills, but if we withholding payment so that they would take action, you know, it is a process that many companies, many businesses do themselves, and municipal corporation, it is an entity, so while we will ultimately be required to pay the bills that we're entitled, that we're required to not, you know, after deducting whatever is those lights are, but with just withholding those payments, or, you know, we haven't really been getting any response yet, so...
Why are you telling me it's legal?
Well, I'm saying it's, it's, we're still going to be on the hook to make those payments.
Will we be on the hook for any interest?
By doing so, and by, to get their attention, is a tactic. I'm not going to say it's legal because we still owe those money. I, you know, I can't say that it's illegal.
Can they charge us interest?
They could try. They could try, and it depends on how they would react, or whether they would try to take us into court if we refuse to pay interest. It would be how that would have to end up working out, but yes, we are all, we are obligated to pay our bills. We're not obligated to pay for lights that aren't being working, and, you know, if that's a tactic that borough wants to take, that's, that's a tactic. It's not going to take us off the hook that we don't have, end up having to pay those bills.
Are there any other comments? Being no other comments, roll call.
Councilperson's Roberts?
Yes.
Balka?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
And mayor, please, before we move on while we're on this topic, I would like to compel Jersey Central to find an alternative source for that road while we're waiting for those repairs. I understand that they are complicated repairs, but they've known about this for quite some time. Also, if we can't find...
Well, let's put that in the request rather than create separate ordinances for separate actions.
Then, let's do that, and I would also like our professionals to try to come up with a creative solution to address the issue in the interim until those lights are fixed.
Okay. Well, Glenn, if you would bring it to the police and DPW, and maybe bring the spotlights out there at night, the road lights. Okay.
Or come up with another solution that is going to be...
Yes, so that it's for public safety purposes.
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay, correspondents?
We just, we need a motion to... We just, we need a motion to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Resolution.
After that, accept the resolutions, except in the bill list, the bill for JCPN L.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Roberts?
Yes.
Falca?
On resolution 2025-219, I'm abstaining, Adalex number 2505065 and 2505106. And I will be voting no on 2025-230. 230. Yes on all their items.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm abstaining, I'm saying no for the JCPN L, uh, bill. We have, uh, we made a motion and basically it was just ignored council's vote to deduct, you know, for months now. So I'm not going to, uh, vote for that. Uh, on the other ones, I'm going to vote no on 23 and 29, mainly because according to our rules and regu-, uh, our rules of order, it, nothing is supposed to be on the business agenda unless it was discussed at an agenda meeting. Now, I know that the lawyer said he went through it and he didn't see that exact verbiage. And he's right, because I went and I found the exact verbiage that's used is nothing goes on the business agenda that hasn't been, that hasn't been brought forth by the committee. These two things refer to open space and my name is on these resolutions. And it was never discussed at this meeting or with me personally to use the open space funds. I mean, we just keep, we, we vote for rules and regulations and then we just ignore them willy-nilly. So I am going to be voting no on that. Other than that, yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay. Correspondents?
Motion to accept the correspondence as listed?
So moved.
Roll call.
Councilperson Novak?
Yes.
Falca?
Yes.
Kalisi?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay, mayor and council reports, administration and finance, Councilman Falca.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we just received our, our audit from 2024. You'll notice, well, if you looked at, you'll notice that our fund balance went up to $17 million, up from 16.5 the year before, which is pretty good, pretty healthy. We had two recommendations, one was reviewed from the prior year. And the next thing we're going to have was best practices inventory came out, we're going to probably discuss it sometime in October because the, the results are due October 24th, I believe. So, other than that, progress.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Councilman Zabrowski.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Mayor. Uh, first and foremost, I want to thank all our volunteers and our staff for, uh, really a wonderful day, uh, on Sunday, for our Saraville Day. Uh, as always, we put our best foot forward and it was a tremendous turnout and I think everybody had a, had a great day. Um, for the Active Adult Center, I just want to thank Jen and her staff for, uh, all her summer, uh, projects and activities. Uh, it was really a summer full for, um, for our seniors and I think they had a good time. And just a reminder, coming up on October 22nd is the annual Halloween party. It's, uh, one of, two or three of those events a year that everybody comes to. Uh, just a reminder again, tickets are necessary and they're available through the center. For planning, Sarah and zoning, uh, zoning board has the meeting tomorrow. Uh, planning board and Sarah, progress. Uh, I do have a question for Jay, I think it's Jay, on Journey Mill Road. Uh, the construction on Journey Mill Road, which is, uh, for the overpass or the bridge or whatever they may be, can you give me, uh, a, a progress report? Because it just seems like it's gone on forever and, and the, and secondarily, um, I'm not going to say it's unsafe, but boy, oh, boy, there's not a lot of signage there. The, uh, the way they've got that divided out and separated, um, it just, it just seems like it's inviting an issue. Um, where are we at?
I was in contact with the consultant for the county that's handling the project. They indicated that this week they're working on punch list, next week they're supposed to be working on milling and paving. So hopefully over the next two weeks, the project will be completed.
We hope so. It's been going a long time and it's, uh, it just, it's not a good situation. But speaking of a good situation, the mayor and I, uh, did attend, um, a dinner for Father Ken Murphy from St. Stanislaus on Saturday evening. Um, not to celebrate his 26 years, but the fact that he is moving on to, uh, new assignments. I bring this up from, from the perspective of being a former chief and that is, um, you know, when times are tough in your town, you, you, you go to those that can give really good advice. Uh, we're very lucky that we've had a council of faith-based leaders throughout the years to be able to, uh, we were really rely on. And, and I would say from a personal standpoint, I, I've done that with Father Ken. Uh, his advice was always simple, to the point, uh, and I think he always provided great information. We're going to miss him, although we do wish, uh, very good luck to, um, the new pastor. Uh, but, uh, from my perspective, um, obviously losing someone of his experience is always tough to overcome. And, and here, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, public safety, Councilman Kalisi.
Thank you, Mayor. This past Sunday, Saraville Day event was a success in large part due to the hard work, professionalism, and coordination of our police officers, OEM personnel, firefighters, EMS, and our other volunteers. On behalf of the council and the, and our entire community, thank you for keeping our residents and families safe. Thanks, Kyle. So, uh, my report from, uh, Police Chief Dan Plumacher. Members of the Saraville Police Department proudly participated in the 2025 Tour de Force 9/11 Memorial Bike Ride. It's a four-day, 280-mile journey held annually each September to honor the victims of September 11 attacks and raise funds for the families of the fallen law enforcement officers. This year's ride held from September 11th through the 14th, covered routes between Philadelphia and Atlantic City. Each rider, many of them active or retired law enforcement officers, completed daily distances of 50 to 80 miles and raised at least $1,700 in donations. Gil, I just got tired reading that. So representing Saraville was Captain Patrick Kiernan, Lieutenant Sean O'Donnell, Lieutenant Dave Wilkins, Sergeant Jeff Taylor, retired lieutenant Pete Skarzinski, and additionally, Officer Thomas Pizzillo. He served as a motorcycle escort, ensuring the safety of riders at busy intersections throughout the route. The ride is not only a physical challenge, but also a deeply emotional tribute to those lost in the line of duty. Along the way, communities showed their incredible support, turning the ride into a moving expression of remembrance, unity, and resilience. The funds raised directly benefit the families of fallen officers, which is a powerful reminder that the legacy of 911 lives on throughout, uh, through service, sacrifice, and solidarity. Next report is from, uh, uh, OEM. So Director Chris Bardsley of the Saraville Office of Emergency Management reports, uh, OEM personnel have remained actively engaged this month, participating in multiple school safety drills during the start of this new year. So OEM also played an important role in Saraville, in Saraville Day, assisting with security and traffic control at Kennedy Park. Looking ahead, the office is working on the digital mapping of the borough to improve emergency coordination and will be operating the command center during the upcoming Saraville High School Homecoming Game in October. Uh, my next report from the, uh, Fire Chief George Gaverin reports that the Saraville Fire Department continues to make steady progress on its ongoing initiatives and remains focused on maintaining operational readiness, improving departmental coordination, and delivering timely, effective emergency response to the community. So once again, I want to thank every member of our police department, fire department, Office of Emergency Management, EMS, and all our volunteers for their efforts, not only during Saraville Day, but each and every day throughout the year. Your service does not go unnoticed. And tonight, on behalf of this council and residents of Saraville, I offer you our sincere appreciation. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Kalisi. Public Works, Councilwoman Novak.
Uh, yes, um, I have so many notes here. Um, I had just have one question. How many police officers did we just hire when we had those interviews? Just three? Okay, just wanted to check. Um, uh, John spoke of Father Murphy. I, I wished I knew about the dinner to honor him because, uh, the man is so special. All of my years on the, um, First Aid Squad, Glenn knows there's something about me that people ask me to pray with them and stuff like that, but when I had a, a deceased member, I would ask, uh, a deceased patient, I would ask the family if they would like a priest. And without fail, Father Murphy would come to the scene whenever I called him. And all of the other parishes around here, I got answering machines. Father Murphy, I, I just gave up after a while and only call Father Ken because he was, he would come. One Sunday, he, uh, somebody passed away, uh, on Jacobson Street and it was almost time for, uh, nine o'clock mass. And it had snowed and he ran down the street in his vestments for mass, gave him the last rites and then ran back up the street. That, there's a special place when he makes it to heaven, although I hope it's not, and for a long time, there will be a special place for that man in heaven. Also, uh, this week, we also, we had the, uh, groundbreaking for the, uh, the, uh, the new baseball fields up behind, uh, the soccer complex. And it's been such a long time coming and it was so wonderful and God even gave, gave us a great day to do it. Um, and also we had the 25th anniversary of Friends of the Library. They did a wonderful presentation at the library, but also, I, I don't remember the, the author's name, but is, he's a resident of the town and he wrote this, what's his name?
Jim Vanco.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. He wrote a book, it's called The Headless Brickman, and it's only $10 and, uh, it's really something to behold if you can, I know the Historical Society actually bought a lot of copies, so they would have them if anybody wanted them. It's, it's something that everybody should invest the $10 in and, uh, and do that. Uh, I'm happy to see that we, uh, passed changing the ordinance so that auxiliary police officers would get the same, um, attaboys or we, we allow our first aid and firemen and our police auxiliary are also volunteer. And now they will be able to also get free building permits, zoning permits, dog licenses, fishing licenses, stuff like that. Um, Glenn found out for me that LoSAP is not available because that's a state program. Uh, I talked to, um, this weekend to Craig Coughlin and Yvonne Lopez and they were unaware that, uh, police auxiliary, and I'm not sure if it's every town, but I know in our town the police auxiliaries are all volunteer. So they promised me, and I will keep bugging them until they do, to include that. So we will also be able to offer that to our, uh, a police auxiliary. And, oh, I have one question. Um, usually in these bond ordinance, or at least it used to be, um, we would get a list of the streets. Do you think you could, you, I'm sure you have, you could get that to me because it wasn't in there. And that's one thing I used to like to keep. So people ask me what streets are going to be done. My goodness, I can't even read my own handwriting anymore. I wrote so much down here. Oh, I just wanted to say something about the building out here. My idea of historic preservation, I mean, I would have loved to have seen the mayor's office out there the way it originally was in that building. And believe me, I know that those temporary trailers that had been there 30 years, you shut the door and the whole building rocks. So it needs to be taken care of. Um, I was just hoping that since we have a public works facility that has, we've been told for years, uh, really needs to, it, it doesn't accommodate most of the vehicles anymore. And we're welding in a building without fire suppression and before something terrible happens, we should be doing that. And I was hoping that that building could be renovated into, um, for the zoning and , and building because they don't, they need office space. They don't necessarily need anything fancy. But, um, I, I think the thing that bothers me is that I heard about this, not up here, not in a phone call. I heard about all of this at Saraville Day. I know I'm, I'm the only Democrat sitting up here, but at least treat me with a little bit of respect, that I, I'm really getting tired of hearing things. I, I heard a bunch of stuff at the fishing, uh, der- derby that apparently everybody knew about, but me. If, you know, this was in the planning, hey, give me a heads up so I don't stand there saying I don't know what you're talking about. Other than that, Mayor, progress.
Thank you. Uh, water, sewer, environmental, Councilman Sinarski.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, nothing really is too much changed in water and sewer. We're still up over 200 million gallons of use per month. Uh, everybody knows there's not much rain coming. I don't really see much in the future either. Again, try just plead to conserve water. Uh, I was coming up the Parkway today in Bricktown and the northbound side of the Parkway has a reservoir and I never seen it that low in 20 years. So we have to really concentrate on trying to conserve water a little bit. Uh, they're doing all their normal maintenance in the water and sewer department. Everything is going pretty good with that. We have some issues on the Bemers Pump Station, that's going to be rebuilt. Um, the community garden is winding down a little bit. Uh, there's, you know, there's still some tomatoes left and stuff and hopefully anybody gets a chance to take a ride over there and go see it. Uh, I do want to say one thing, we had an issue at the Knights of Columbus a couple weeks ago. We had a family picnic and, uh, within a minute, the big tree fell down. It fell on, down on top of the tents, it fell down on top of the DJ. There was people trapped under the trees. And before we even got a chance to get anybody out, Saraville Police were there immediately. The first aid squad was there within minutes. The fire department from multiple areas were there in only a few minutes. I just want to say with Saraville, we're so lucky to have all of these volunteers plus the police department. And I just want to, like Mike said earlier, I just want to give them a shout out and thank you very much for their response at the Knights of Columbus a couple of weeks ago. It was just unbelievable. Like, like I said, we were still getting people off under the trees. You know, people had oil burns from the fryers, people were hurt. But, uh, everybody was very professional and took care of all the injured people. Thanks again. Okay, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Recreation Council President Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I will start with some of the things going on in Saraville. There is no need to leave town in this time of year because we've got so much going around, going on. I'm going to start from the end of the calendar that I have right now. So October 21st, Tricker Trunk, which is huge. I've never seen such large lines and such happy people to be there. Um, we'll have October 22nd is the Cruisin' Car Show. On October 18th, the Scare Trail from Cultural Arts at Berks Park with Beetlejuice. We will have on October 12th, the Festival of Lights at Kennedy Park. October 9th is the Bomber Bar, Bomber Bonfire behind the Borough Hall. That's an alliteration I can't say very well. Um, and October 8th, the day before is a Cruisin' Car Show. October 4th is Hit the Bricks. One of these that is on my list is not a Saraville, um, Borough-sponsored event, but it is important. It's, um, September 27th at the First Presbyterian Church, they're doing a Saraville Feeds event. On September 26th, the day before is the Grill and Game Day at Berks Park before the football game. September 24th, another Cruisin' Car Show. See, you don't have to leave here. You're just everywhere in Saraville. And what we've just had was Saraville Day, a very successful day. We've had beautiful weather over the weekend for it. The day before, we had the Blast From The Past Car Show. We also did the groundbreaking at the Jerry Ust Complex. We're going to include, um, lighting, parking, and a new field there. And Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, 180 days?
Yeah, they have 180 days to complete.
Okay, tick tock. Um, so we'll get, we'll be seeing some of that coming soon. Um, also, the library had a wonderful event for their 25th anniversary and there was a presentation with Sue Paul accepting that award for that group. They do great work, um, raise a lot of money and awareness for the library. Some of the other successes from Cultural Arts that recently happened, Hawaiian Luau was a very, very successful and fun night, Latin salsa. Everyone that attends those events thinks they're amazing and I just hope that we'll get more and more people each year. I do want to thank Brian from Recreation for all that he does to pull this together. Today we have Sharon here from Cultural Arts also, who works really hard to get these events going. Um, some of the things we, we have to look back at some of the successes we've had this year. Um, the garden finding its final location and it's just been wonderful, the Environmental Commission, the Garden Commission. So your team is doing a great job with all of that. We have the farmer's market on Thursdays, all the new pickleball courts, I see them filled almost all the time I go by. The lighting looks great, the fields look wonderful. Um, we have the new Kennedy Park restrooms in place. We're getting wider walkways in our parks. We have the Bailey's Park grant that we've just accepted. We've done a lot of work and we're going to start seeing the fruits of our labor. Um, we also have the environmental resource inventory that is going to give us a lot of detail. We have an open space, um, report. We've got a number of different things in different places. Our professionals are going to leverage all of that. The open space report is a little old, so we would have to get a new one anyway. So the environmental resource inventory is going to be a very useful tool. Um, a couple of things I've got that are not specifically recreation-related. Oh, and I also want to thank the Human Relations Commission for being at, um, Saraville Day and everybody that worked so hard to make that a success. A couple of things I wanted to talk about, um, with public safety, and I know that we've talked about this before and Mike, um, we, you and I talked about this earlier today. There is a, um, issue with Ernston Road. We know that there's a lot of issues with Ernston Road. Um, we did have someone who showed up to one of our council meetings in the past, um, who had asked what was going on. We had the county come, the county gave a, um, information session at the library. I was there, I put my postie note on where I thought the, the worst parts were. And Jay and I spoke just before the meeting. Can you tell me a little bit about what, um, what's going on, just in?
The county completed a very detailed, what they call an audit report concerning the conditions on Ernston Road as well as a number of other towns throughout the county. They made specific recommendations for, uh, basically each intersection as it connects to Ernston Road. And based upon the conclusion of their report, they're now looking for funding options to pursue further planning, design, and construction of those improvements.
Okay, they still haven't made this, any decisions on which direction they're going to go or, or-
That's correct, not to my knowledge. I think they're looking at funding at this point.
So you've got a, a long way to go. Did you, you've also mentioned that some time ago, there was a discussion about getting, um, like we have on the other side, the painted box for, um, the intersection, especially Pine Tree, which is right there?
Yeah, on Singer Court, you have a Do Not Block The Box, uh, painted striping. Years ago, the request was made for Pine Tree and I think also Locust. It came from the police department and the county, I thought was going to go through and proceed with it, but it was never done.
Um, is that something we can pursue today?
I think we can ask the county what the status is. I think we can ask the county what the status is. We can just mention that it was previously approved and see what we can, if we can get that moving again.
Can we get a block the box on the Main Street extension? That intersection is blocked all of the time. I sat through five lights because the other side just blocked the entire intersection when the light changed. Everybody got a New Jersey driver's license. Don't block the intersections.
Yeah. But for that one, since it was, since the police department did make a recommendation, and the county did seem to accept that, Glenn, is that something you would be able to follow up with as the BA for us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Also, I did get a call from another resident who had a water leak. And I understand that we don't pay for water leaks, but I think the, the problem was that there was a note left on the door, and that note never made it to the resident, so it took longer to get resolved. What kind of options do we have for a resident that finds themselves in that position? Because that was a very, very large bill. Do we have any, any recommendations or any?
I don't have a specific recommendation, but we did put that resident in contact with the water superintendent to discuss how to address the bill.
All right, thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure I followed up. And just the last thing I want to wrap up with is we do try to do as much outreach as possible so we can resolve citizens' residence issues as best as we can. So we can't solve anything if we don't know about it first and then just follow up. We're human, so we can, we can always use that nudge. And I just think something that I want to put in everyone's head is volunteerism. We always need volunteers. It was brought up by Councilwoman Novak and Councilman Sinarski about how lucky we are to have people that give up their time and family time and their effort and do training to be able to be firemen and first aid. And we need volunteers in every aspect of our community. And if you haven't already volunteered, please do consider it and give back to your community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Under the mayor's report, first thing, America lost a great American named Charlie Kirk. And Charlie leaves a widow and two children, senselessly murdered. But what, what, what's been happening since his assassination is the world has taken notice of this. And everything that I read on social media and the newspapers around the world, he made a difference as, he, he got people, well, the church, he got people to come back to church, to, to come back to their faith, to want a better way. So I'm going to ask everyone if we, join me in a moment of silence. And it's more about his wife, Erica, and his two kids. He led, he led an exemplary life, and we lost a great American. So if you'd join me in a moment of silence for Charlie Kirk. Thank you. Next, I have, on, on October 12th, we're going to have our first Festival of Lights down at Kennedy Park, and it's from six?
Three.
Oh.
Three.
Three to nine. So it, it's the beginning of a multicultural celebration. So come on down. There's going to be interesting vendors, music, dancing, food. The, the Festival of Lights Committee has been working very hard, very diligently, and let's support them. Second thing, we're going to use this year's Community Block Development Grant money to repave the Veterans Walk, which is the walkway from, if you go into the parking lot, there's a smaller flagpole down at the, down in the corner, and that was put up for the veterans. It's a veterans' walkway. If I remember, Eddie Strick talked about its origin and its use, and it basically goes from Borough Hall to St. Stan's. So that is going to be repaved. The next thing is, the Historic Society had, had made a map of the Borough. And since we have so many new people in town, I think it would be appropriate if I had a link put on the Borough website. For those who are new to the Borough, the history was, if you, if we just take the 20th century, the map shows that Sayerville was really a mining operation. We had, we had our, we had the world's largest brickworks. We, in World War I and II, we made munitions. The big employer was the brickworks, Hercules, DuPont, National Lead. But then it was mining. And Sayerville was known for clay, for sand, for gravel, and for dirt. And that mining continued into the 70s. And then what happened was the, the price of property went up, and, and, and it was, it was a better business decision for the mining companies to sell it to developers. And, and that's where the 4,000 residences came from. So I'm going to have this Historic Society map posted on it so that you see, you know, the Ernston Road did not connect to Washington Road. It was just a different, different town, and it's a very interesting history. You know, Shopwright wasn't there. Kennedy Park was part of the Sandman, the Crossman Sand Company. I think where the high school and, and the library, that, they were all part of the, the Crossman Sand Company, if I have everything correct. And that being said, we will go on to the next bit of business.
General discussion, agenda items, admin and finance. Authorization to award a contract to Fovionix Imaging Technologies Incorporated of Clinton, New Jersey for digitizing the Borough's archived records in an amount not to exceed $500,000.
Any objections? Next item.
Authorization to award a contract for basic life support services and emergency medical services to Hackensack Meridian Health, JFK Emergency Services Edison in the amount not to exceed $64,000.
Any objection? Next item.
Application for special event received from the following. St. Stan's Car Show at St. Stan's Church and School grounds on October 26th with a rain date of November 2nd from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Any objection? Next item.
Authorization to amend Beth Magnani's title from principal payroll clerk to payroll supervisor effective October 1st, 2025.
Any objection? Next item.
Authorization to amend Beata Doigan's title from supervisor of payroll and benefits to benefit supervisor effective October 1st, 2025.
Any objection? Next item.
Authorization to appoint Jamie Kurtz to clerk one in the administration department effective October 1st, 2025.
Any objection? Next item.
Authorization for CME associates to prepare design and engineering for upgrades to Bailey Park.
Any objection? Next item.
Authorization to award a contract to Flock Group Incorporated of Atlanta, Georgia for a flock camera system in an amount not to exceed $180,542.43 using forfeiture funds.
Glenn, very briefly, where, where, where do you think the, what, the purpose of the cameras? Let's do it that way.
The purpose of the cameras, this is a state-of-the-art tool used by public safety agencies. It's posted in public places, intersections, major parks, things of that nature. They're generally equipped in addition with video capturing abilities. They also have automatic license plate readers, and it's been identified as a cutting-edge and very useful tool to increase the probability of our police department being able to solve crimes and such.
And this is no cost to the taxpayer?
No, that's being used for, for forfeiture funds, which were confiscated by the courts for prior criminal cases. And we were authorized by the county prosecutor to employ the use of those funds for the acquisition of this camera system, which is going in pretty much throughout the county.
Okay. So that, that being said, will the public have access to the camera's database?
No, it'll be just like the body worn cameras that the police wear. You can certainly file an Oprah to get archived videos, but they'll have to be redacted in accordance with prevailing law.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Glenn?
That's on after.
Okay, CFO's report, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Progress.
Thank you. Borough Engineers Report, Jay Cornell.
I'll report, Mayor, this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Attorneys Report.
Mayor, actually, was going to have a report, but I think was already addressed at the last council meeting. I was asked to look into whether the police auxiliary is subject to the LoSAP, and the answer was already answered by Councilwoman Novak. That is, unfortunately, they are not. I will note that in my research, I did find that the legislature has periodically introduced amendments trying to add them to, but unfortunately, it doesn't seem to have gone anywhere, so hopefully this next round it will.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public portion. Are there any questions or comments? Come on up, Sharon.
On Sunday, I was at the Fest, the Sayerville Day, and I donated five hours of my time, and then I had to run down to the soccer field because the soccer team that my son is on, and I'm sorry if this sounds like a very small issue compared to the big business that you guys do handle here. But as, as boys age out, 15, 16, 17 years old, there's less sports for them to do. In any case, a group of boys, about 38 boys down at the soccer field, have been practicing for about six weeks. They were divided into two teams, and they've been playing as two teams. Something happened with the other team, and the coach decided to leave the team my son is on and take most of the players. So that team has 18 players. My son's team is left with seven. A soccer team can play with nine players. The other team has 18. I'm so sorry to bring this to your attention, but I've called Vince Conti, and I called Brian Monteleone, who handle all of this, and you don't get anywhere. You don't get callbacks. I text Mary five times if Mary would help me get in touch with Vince. I don't know how you pay for these boys. Two of them don't have uniforms. We don't have certain equipment for the goalie. I'm down there like being a soccer coach Sunday night, so we really need someone's help. If somebody could call Vince.
Are they, are they part of the Sayerville Soccer?
SAA?
Yeah.
You're right.
Okay. Donna, if you would, address this with Brian, and we'll, we'll get an answer for you, Sharon.
There's a game on, there's a game next Sunday. If the teams are not equally split up, one team goes away.
Yep.
It's the team my son is on, and now I donate my time to this town. I would like this to be handled fairly. We need some uniforms, and we need goalie gloves.
Right.
And we can't get an answer.
All right, we'll find out.
All right. Can I call you Donna tomorrow?
Call Donna.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. And thanks for a great summer of concerts with the cultural arts. Job well done. Sharon, while you're here, why don't you talk about your Halloween thing for the, for the younger kids? But you got to speak, you, well.
So we start, we started out with an idea of showing Beetlejuice Beetlejuice in Berks Park. I'm working very closely with the entire Parks Department. They're going to move all the tables to the center, like, make like an amphitheater in the center, like, we'll be right in the middle of the woods. We have Emerson, who's the town music man. He's going to donate his time. We'll have speakers all over the park piping in scary witches screaming and, you know, winds and thunderstorms. Recreation Department helped me purchase smoke machines. We've got pizzas. We're working on getting them half price. The school is very behind us. I have teachers from Sayerville Schools already emailing me. They want their kids to be dressed up in themes. There's families. I signed up on Sayerville Day, 20 volunteers that'll help us decorate the park also.
Wonderful.
So the, I think Halloween just brings people together. So the park is going to be very, very alive on this date. My whole street on my block wants to come and help. So I'm also offering, I'll make another beautiful flyer like this that if anybody wants to donate any decorations, I'll come to their house, even if they have just one piece. Like, I'll have a day that I go pick up decorations. We'll be decorating the park on the 17th, and the 18th is going to be the biggest Halloween party.
Right. Thank you, Sharon, for doing this.
All right.
Much appreciate it.
Can I bring this to St. Stan's? Of course, of course. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Robinson, Portland. It's hard to follow Sharon and what she's doing for the kids, especially with the Halloween, but I will try. This is probably the fifth or sixth time I've come up here, and I've asked about the DuPont settlement and the PSAF chemicals. We hired our own attorney a while ago. We know that there was a larger settlement that the AG was involved with that is statewide. A lot of people, people I don't know, stop me because they've heard me ask this question, and they ask me to get updates about how does it impact our community? And don't the people have the right to know? Has this migrated to Laurel Park, or to the Bus Depot site, or to the first aid squad, or the post office, Berks Park, to the middle school, even, even, you know, Kennedy Park, maybe? It just, I think we ought, we're entitled to know. Folks apparently want to know, and I'm sure if they reach out to me, I'm sure they reach out to you as well. So I, I think we ought to get some update on that, especially since we've hired our own attorney. The other thing I'd like to say is, Donna, I want to thank you for the motion on the streetlights. Mary, you have been on top of this for a very long time. You've been a fierce advocate. I remember the first time I raised this issue, and the business administrator said, short of the council directing me not to pay the bill, I don't know what we can do. So tonight, I guess he was directed not to pay the bill. So I appreciate that. On behalf of the residents who tell me that they appreciate it, I appreciate it. It's amazing, you know, the closer we get to election, how we can get action done on things. That's a good thing. Is it, you know, this is, Mayor, you said questions, and we ask a lot of questions. I ask a lot of questions. That presupposes that there will be answers. And at some time, I think it would be good if we could get answers, especially to the PSA, PSAF question, acetaminophen. But I understand from my sources that we can't close on the Journey Mill property because they, which is the refrigeration warehouse, which we're going to get $20 million for, which is a pretty nice drop in the bucket. I think we spent, we're authorizing, what is it, 17 million in expenditures? I did the math quickly. I could be wrong. So getting that $20 million would be good. My understanding is they can't close on the property because JCP&L can't provide them electricity, and we know refrigerated warehouses use a lot of electricity. So I think it would be good to update folks on that. I don't want to say I was, I was shut down when I started to ask this question when we were talking about affordable housing. I guess the clock ran out. So I, I'll be fair and say we ran out of time. But in that affordable housing document, which I have read backwards and forwards a few times, I didn't see anything about veterans' housing. Now, you know, we were supposed to have veterans' housing down on Blaska Court, or Blaska Way, or whatever it is. That turned out to be a myth. We got the wool pulled over our eyes. I called there and asked for an application. They don't even ask if you're a veteran. And then when I pursued it, they said, it's not for low-income veterans, it's for homeless veterans. Well, I don't know if this is accurate, but the statistics say, and, and people have told me, no, the, the statistics didn't catch everybody, but there are no homeless veterans in Middlesex County. I hope that's the case. But we ought to be doing something for veterans, and especially when it comes to affordable housing and what happened there. And John, I mentioned this to you because it was a Sarah project. What happened down there just wasn't what we expected, wasn't what we were told. I understand that it conformed with a statute, but there are other statutes that would have allowed there to be a preference for veterans. And that's what should be done, and that's what should be done in this round. And we can amend that. and we can amend that, Joe told us that, and I hope we would do that. Last, I just want to say this, we set a very dangerous precedent tonight, when we say that if we want to renovate any old building to make it an office, we just call it historic, then we can take money from the Open Space and Historic Trust, that's not what it was meant for. Renovating an old building to be used for the construction department is not the same as preserving a historically significant building, my time is up, thank you all.
Mike, the person working in the capacity as Chief of Staff in my office is a fellow named Ken Kelly, he's a Vietnam veteran, he was a medic, he took care of the dying and the wounded, he is the veterans liaison for the Borough of Sereville, and has been for probably the past 25 years, and when this topic comes up, I talked to him, and he said, he said, Middlesex County has one of the finest veterans' housing programs in the country, and he said, if, if I call the county and say I have a homeless veteran, or I have a veteran in need, it is immediately addressed and taken care of, it's kind of like our Board of Health, where we, it's centralized, we, we contract with the county, and that's where the veteran housing comes in, so I would recommend anyone having, anyone having any issues, problems, or questions about veterans' housing, the whole spectrum, needs to call Ken Kelly in my office, and he will, that's one of the things that he does, and does very, very well, so there is no problem in Sereville with veterans' housing, according to Ken, and when and if a veteran is identified in need, it is immediately addressed by, by us locally and by the county, so I, I don't want anybody to think that they're, anyone who says that Sereville ignores the veterans is foolish, this is a very pro-veteran town, so, and that's just one of the many things that we do. Is there any, any other questions or comments for the open public portion, they're being done, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the public portion to be closed.
Second.
Roll call?
Does anybody know that?
Yes.
Falca?
Yes.
Felicity?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sinarsky?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Take a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone, have a nice evening.